I'd like to call a bid and order and ask you to join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, I'd ask if you'd call roll please, and we do have Caitlin Turner on speaker phone.
David Burris.
Here.
Ray Echope.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Allison Ritterbusch.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum. First item is to approve the agenda. I'd ask for a motion to approve the council agenda.
Make a motion approving council agenda of August 5th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, and I can ask that correction to be made to August 19th agenda. You had a discussion?
It says August 5th.
Uh huh. We're doing the agenda.
We are looking at the agendas. Are there any discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. And Misty, did you get a ruling for us on the?
Better safe than sorry. Go ahead, do it.
We will have all the votes heretofore, a roll call vote. Misty has noticed in one of the publications that it's required when we have someone on phone. And we don't know whether that means when the meeting is conducted by phone or we have just one member. So in order to avoid any confusion, we'll have all roll call votes tonight. And also, I want to remind everybody, if there is a conflict of interest on any of the items on our agenda tonight, for anyone on the council, I would ask that you notify the entire council prior to voting. Thank you. Now we move on to the minutes from the August 5th council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 5th council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Been moved and seconded and approved those minutes. Are there any questions, comments concerning the minutes?
Is that the February 19th? Yeah.
This is going to be an interesting evening. Okay, I'd ask Misty to call the roll for approving the minutes for the 5th of August meeting.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echope.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch. Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Minutes are approved. Also have in your packages bills in between for $178,436.16. Would accept a motion to approve those bills in between?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between for $178,436.16.
Second. Been moved and seconded and approved those bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, Misty, I'd ask you to call the roll please.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echope.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards. Allison Ritterbusch. Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, those bills in between are approved. Current claims are $46,039.30. Ask for a motion to approve current claims.
Make a motion to approve current claims of $46,039.30.
Sounds good.
Been moved and seconded to approve those current claims. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echope.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards. Allison Ritterbusch. Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, those current claims are approved. We do have a couple of council updates, and I'd like to ask Olivia to come forward and give us a chamber commerce update.
Hello, okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayakotti, esteemed council members, city personnel, and members of the community. Thank you for welcoming me here tonight to give the quarterly report from the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce. As we are still in August, and we do have a bit of time left in the season, I'll start with where we stand on tourism. Tourism was off to a slow start this year, and with the extremely rainy start to the season, we do seem to be about two weeks behind our normal numbers. The depot information center also did report a slower start to the season. The visitation figures for this year are as follows. From May of 2018, we had 597 visitors versus 579 for May of 2019, so we're down by 18 there. In June of 2018, we saw 2,134 visitors compared to June 2019 of 1822. So we're down by 312 people. And then July of 2018, we had 2231 visitors versus 2156 visitors, so we're down by 153. Now, we do have to take into account that these figures are compiled of people who stop in at the depot and sign the guestbook. So we do have many visitors who come to town who don't stop in and sign. So therefore, those folks are not being counted. Also, with the digital options being what they are these days, the function of the visitor center is evolving, and not everybody feels the need to get assistance from somebody at a visitor center. Many folks have already Googled or Googled Earth their trip and have made up their own minds where they want to go and then just go and do it without stopping in at the depot. So although we may have more folks in town, not necessarily all of them will stop there and be counted. So regarding how we market Hot Springs, we try to get as much value as possible out of our tourism dollars. And this year, we had an excellent presence in both print and digital mediums. To make our dollars go further, we participate in co-ops with South Dakota Tourism and our regional partner, Black Hills and Badlands Tourism Association. We work with them to make sure we know what areas they are targeting to maximize our presence, and we're also fortunate to have the Bitboard and the Mammoth Site doing substantial marketing on their own as well. The Southern Hills Vacation Guide is a cooperative piece that is done between Hot Springs, Custer, Hill City, and Keystone with a circulation of approximately 90,000. And this year saw the first year where the piece was produced by Evergreen Media. We had a double-page spread in that publication, and we're also lucky enough to have our own Hot Springs Welcome Magazine, which is published by the former county herald, that has a circulation of 40,000, and we also had a double-page spread in that magazine. That is also the magazine where our members get free listings. We did a co-op with Hills in the Mammoth Site, which was to create a three-page presence in the Discover I-90 Magazine that gets distributed all along the I-90 from Faces to the Falls. We also appeared in the premier South Dakota Vacation Guide, which is sponsored by the South Dakota Tourism and published by Black Hills and Badlands Tourism. We had a full-page ad there. We also had a full-page ad in Black Hills Visitor, a half-page in the Custer State Park Commemorative Edition, a half-page in the Official Sturgis Publication, a half-page in Traveler Magazine, a half-page in Yellowstone Journal, and a quarter-page in USA Today's Guide to National Parks. We also have a half-page ad in each monthly episode of 605 Magazine, which reaches many folks in South Dakota, which also is a big market for us folks coming from the eastern side of the state. Those were only the print ads. We had an even larger presence with the digital options and the add-ons. And then each year, we tailor our marketing to maximize the dollars and make sure that we have a presence where it'll count the most. We participate in leads gathering programs with Black Hills and Badlands and Yellowstone Journal, which bring in anywhere from 12,000 to 16,000 leads per year. We then qualify those leads by sending them a digital copy with the option of requesting a hard copy in the mail. This method has helped cut down on postage to unqualified leads. So if they respond with a request for a hard copy, we know it's a serious inquiry. If we receive a request either by telephone or directly through the Chamber website, we automatically send them a hard copy of our Welcome Magazine in the mail because we know it's a serious inquiry. So now with this digital option, we don't have to wait to gather enough leads for bulk mail, and so we've managed to cut down on our turnaround time in sending out magazines. From the time the request for a hard copy comes in to the potential visitor receiving their magazine in the mail is about one week, sometimes even less. This shows our potential guests that we're interested in their business and we're serious about inviting them to visit. Nobody likes waiting ages for a magazine when they requested it. The Chamber also rents and maintains six billboards, one north of Maverick, one south of Maverick, one at Minicotta Junction, one just outside Edgemont, one at Mule Creek Junction, and one near Las Guayomi. Our decisions are guided by our tourism committee. They meet on the first Wednesday of every month except in high season. That's just a quick overview of tourism. On the agriculture front, we recently sponsored and served two meals to the 4-H families at County Fair, and we'll again be sponsoring the Conservation Day at Whitney Preserve in September. We'll also be holding the Ag Appreciation Dinner in November, and requests to sponsor this dinner will go out in early September. This year, the committee is wanting to hold the dinner at the Red Rock River Resort. Onto our retail and business promotions and events. At the start of the summer, our kickoff event is the Wine Walk and Putt, and we were graced with excellent weather, so a lot of folks turned out for the event. This is a great way to get the folks down into the downtown businesses, and we plan to continue this event. Our Fourth of July saw a lot of people at the community picnic and the duck race, and this year, we were treated to a flyover by the B-1 Bar. August is balloon month, and the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce Fall River Hot Air balloon festival takes place this weekend. This event has fast become our signature event, and we're very grateful for the support of our sponsors, the city of Hot Springs, the Bitboard, our local businesses, and of course, our balloon master, Petra Wilson, who brought us the event in 2017. Although this is the fourth annual festival, the Chamber only took over on the second year. Last year, the festival saw an attendance of around 2,000 to 3,000 people on both days. This year, we hope to see even more people coming to town. This weekend, weather permitting, we have nearly 25 balloons, hot air balloons in case anyone's wondering, launching on Saturday and Sunday at dawn from the Hot Springs Airport. On Saturday, we also have a huge amount of activity in Hot Springs with a walk-in balloon from 9:00 to 11:00 at the Mammoth Site. And downtown and our local businesses, they've embraced the festivities by offering sidewalk sales, sponsoring local musicians, the Art Walk and Talk. And then from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in Centennial Park, we have the Free Kids Zone with giant inflatables, balloon animals, a magic show, ball fun, kid games. And then this year, for the first time, we've added a few vendors in the park as well. We're hoping that we see good weather so that we can have our night glow at the airport this year. We've crammed as much as we can into the schedule to offer a full day of events to entice people to come to Hot Springs, stay in our accommodations, shop in our stores, and eat in our restaurants. This is also why we keep the admission to the festival free and don't charge for the kids zone. We want people to have money to spend in town. This event takes a huge amount of people to put together, and we are very grateful for all the support we get. We made sure to widely market the event, and I received a grant of nearly $2,000 from Black Hills and Badlands Tourism Association to promote the festival. We continue to push the message that we must support our local businesses, and therefore, it is important for the Chamber to lead the way in promoting our local business. To this end, I'm extremely proud that we spend at least 90% of our budget here in Hot Springs locally. We're very lucky to have been able to source almost everything locally. So I hope I've hit on the salient points, and even though there's always a lot going on and much more to tell, I fear I have used up my time. I invite you to contact your Chamber of Commerce anytime, and please remember that although we are member-based, we are also a resource for all of our community, and we're happy to help residents and guests alike. Please do feel free to sign up for our weekly online newsletter called Spring Tides. It's sent out every Thursday, and there's all the events that are coming up, the city council, video, information, and special offers. Feel free to call us to be added to the list. So we look forward to continuing the promotion of our members and our wonderful town of Hot Springs. I would be remiss if I did not reiterate our request to please support local business and shop locally. Let's keep our dollars in town for the betterment of our community and keep working to grow a vibrant economy in our town. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Olivia. Just a couple of questions. Do you know what the South Dakota Tourism Index shows for this year? Is it also late and down?
It is late, but figures are up on their index. I'm still trying to narrow it down to our area. If anybody wants to take a look, it is open for anyone. You just go to visitsd.com, and on there, you'll see reports. On the right-hand side, you can go in, and then they have charts and graphs. It seems to be showing that hotel occupancy is down, but Airbnb vacation rental-style occupancy is up. And again, I think what we've got to look at is we are going to be seeing a change in the way tourism is working. Everything has its time, and it appears, especially with some of the international marketing that I've been doing, that people are now all about the unique accommodations. So it does fluctuate, and that doesn't mean traditional hotels ever going to go away. But sometimes people want novelty things, and I've noticed that that is prevalent in the international market. Also, revenue is up, but again, I can't narrow it down. But I'm working at it to try and get better statistics for city council and for the board.
Okay, thank you very much. And I think just anecdotally, we just, this past weekend, we're in Rapid City for an appointment and stopped, and some folks had... Marilyn, of course, is good at striking up a conversation with anybody and everyone, and a family was there and just saying how much they enjoyed the Black Hills. And Marilyn asked them if they had gotten to Hot Springs. And they all went to Mount Rushmore, we went to Hill City, went to Custer, but we didn't make it down to Hot Springs. And I just began to tell them about the Mammoth Site, Evans Plunge, and so forth, and they said, oh. So it's a harder task at times to pull those people away from Mount Rushmore, Custer State Park, and get them down here, and we appreciate the job you're doing, Olivia. I'm also very impressed with the Fall River Hot Air balloon festival, how that's grown. That event has really taken off, and I know that's been a labor of love and from the Chamber's standpoint. And again, we really appreciate that. I also noticed some good advertising for that on the local TV stations, very timely spot. And hopefully, that'll attract a lot of people down, so we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate that. On the subject of people coming down to Hot Springs, that is something that is very prevalent in our discussions. Part of the matching dollar fund that we do with South Dakota Tourism, where the Bitboard puts up $40,000, which is matched by South Dakota Tourism, and in return for that, you get Lawrence and Schiller, you have to use them as the ad agency. They're trying to help us work on things to get people to go pass through and pay. Now, unfortunately, because the cell service is not great in that area, things like geo-fencing, where you pop stuff up on their phones that says, "Go there." Well, there's no signal, so if they turn around, they're only going to get the message when they're already halfway back to Custer. We can't put up billboards there because it would be National Park. So Lawrence and Schiller is trying to help us work out different ways to bring people just that little bit further down. And so it's not something that we're ignoring or don't think is important, it's vital, but we haven't cracked the code just yet. But we're still working on, you know, and if people have ideas, we welcome them too, because that's one of the things that does need to be addressed. Part of the reason we work with the Southern Hills Vacation Guide, they find they now are battling with Rapid City entering, I think it's 400 rooms. So it's almost like us as the Southern Hills, and I say this very gently, need to go against Rapid City. It's obviously no animosity in any way, but they're all of its dollars, and we want our share. So we do things like co-op with them to try and get folks into the Southern Hills, and then it's our job to get them into Hot Springs, Custer Trust for Custer, et cetera. So these are things that are on our mind, and if anybody would like to attend the tourism meetings, do feel free, they're on the first Wednesday of every month except in the high season. So please feel free to join at any time.
And one thing that we would ask for some assistance and help with is the appearance of our motels. And I'll just be blunt and honest with you, we've got some that I think a lot of people drive on by because of the exterior appearance. And I would ask that if you could get that, help get us get that message to motel owners. I think more people would also want to stay here in Hot Springs.
Absolutely. curb appeal everywhere is vital. If people see a derelict town, they just drive on by. So you have our assurance, we will address that.
Okay, do any of the council have questions or comments for Olivia? Okay, thank you, Olivia. Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You too, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have our Hot Springs Library Quarterly Update. Dawn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me down.
Can you make sure you speak into the mic so that everyone can hear you? Thank you, Dawn.
Okay. I really enjoy coming and visiting with you because, you know, I always have a lot to talk about when I talk about our library. The first thing I want to visit with you about is our summer reading program that was in the month of June. I think I handed these out at the council meeting for the budget here this year. So I think that everyone was able to look at it, but I wanted to let the public know, and there are some copies up by the front desk, that our summer reading program has expanded exponentially. From 2018 to 2019, we didn't really go up that much as far as people signed up, from 305 to 320, but our attendance exploded. 2018, we had 793 people attend programs. In 2019, we had 1,015 people attend programs. Our reading tokens, for every 30 minutes that someone reads during our program, we give them a token. 2018, we had 1,468 hours read. That's 2,800 and some tokens we gave out. In 2019, we had 1,909 and a half hours that the people of our community read for the summer reading program. And I'd like to say that that was just children. But we had 59, or 92.9 teens and 30.9 adults that participated in our summer reading program this year. So we're glad that we're getting, making our summer reading program a real family, family affair and a family event. I want to give kudos out to the Evans Plunge. We failed to mention them in our publicity in the newspaper. We have a worksheet that anybody can do that's in our program, and if they complete eight of those 11 items on that list, they get a free Evans Plunge class. And this year, we gave away 75 of them, a pass for them to go swimming at the plunge, and we are real excited. The kids were real excited. They came in and they, they got their passes all at the same time, and one group did, because they were on their way to the plunge. They were going to make an afternoon out of it. Some more activities that we still have scheduled for the month of August. Each year, we'll be involved in the balloon fest program. The program at the city park, we'll be down there for a couple hours doing face painting, giving away free kids books. We've got donated books that we'll carry down there and just promote literacy and having fun during the balloon festival. We also carry the same kind of things down to one of the farmer markets on a Friday afternoon, and we'll be doing that the last day of the month. The Friends of the Library has coming up their major triathlon, the major fundraiser for the year, and that will be the Saturday of the Labor Day weekend. So we're excited, any of you runners or bikers or swimmers, there's still time to go and sign up and do your triathlon for the year. Our fall programs are, we just kind of go back to the basic ones that we have, but we, we... Everyone seems to be happy with them. We're going to have our storytimes on Thursday and Friday mornings for the lap sit and the preschoolers. We're having our movie Fridays, our Makerspace Fridays, our Lego Fridays, and something we started last year that turned out to bring in quite a few of the school-age kids is game day. We're not talking computer games, we're talking card games, board games, things that you can do without electronics. So we're having a turn-off, a turn-it-off game day. Last year, they learned how to play Matalla. So we had kids coming in the library and playing Matalla, not during game day, but during the other times, and our chess and our checkers. So we're excited that they think they can stop in and get a cool drink of water and play some games in our lot, in our front fireplace area. We still have our computer classes. There's eight different topics, so we do every... We'll have eight different classes each month, so every month, we start a new round of computer classes. We've had a request, if we could, we usually do those 10:30 to 11:30 on a Tuesday and Wednesday. We've had a request this year, if we could do it on an evening. So I'm thinking that we're going to have a Wednesday evening, a Tuesday evening and a Wednesday evening computer class and see if, see who wants to come instead of morning during basically business hours. So we're excited to bring in some more people by changing our times a little. We're going to continue with our coding class. We had about 10 young men participate last year. This year, Amanda has done the attendance record for that, and she should have about 10 kids coming, and about four of those should be girls. So we're going to continue with coding. We've got a couple of conferences coming up in the month of September. From the 4th through the 9th, I'll be attending the Association of Rural and Small Library Conferences in Burlington, Vermont. This is a donated trip. There's been an anonymous donor to the Friends of the Library specifically for someone at the library to go to a national conference. I've attended 7-Eleven, and I've attended the ALA Conference. I found that the ALA Conference is, the American Library Association is just too big, and they have rural topics, but this Association of Rural and Small Libraries really addresses the kind of issues and programs and things that are happening in small and rural libraries, and I really, I really enjoy going and learning things at this conference. At the end of the month is always our State Library Conference. They have it twice over East River and then once West River. This year, we're fortunate that it is West River, and it's going to take place in Spearfish the 25th, 26th, 27th. The library will be closed on the Thursday, the 26th, so the entire staff can attend the whole day's worth of teaching that they're going to have going on there. Amanda has, I think, three speaking engagements, her being the chairman of the Children's Book Award. She'll have speaking engagements during this conference. And I myself will be giving a presentation on the Association of Rural and Small Libraries so that I can get other people in South Dakota, let them know that that is, it's there for them, and it's a lot less expensive than going to the ALA Conference. The last thing I have is some patron numbers. Now, I didn't break this down into quarterly reports, but as of the end of July, we've had, for the whole year, we've had 30,310 people walk through the door of the library. It works out to be about 5,000 people a month. People ask how we do that, and I'm like, well, we have little wood fairies. But in all actuality, we have a camera at the door. Our collection checked out, checkouts for six months is right at 28,000 items checked out in six months. Our Wi-Fi and internet usage is, I have two categories. One, every time somebody logs on to the Wi-Fi, it keeps track, and I have 9,453 logins in six months. And the computer usage counts how many times somebody logs into an actual piece of hardware that's in our library. And I've had 15,000 logins to our 15 computers that we have in six months. Evo checkout, you guys see that as overdrive in your budget. We spend $1,500 a year to be part of overdrive, and in six months, we've had 4,492 books or audiobooks checked out on that. or audiobooks checked out on that. It's, and it keeps going up. Last month, there were 600 and some items checked out on overdrive. Our small meeting room, we've, we've used it, the public has used it 165 times. The large meeting room has been used 876 times. We say that we've only had eight events in our library. We didn't count any of those summer reading events. That's kind of a separate, separate item, but we've had eight other events in our library that have brought in about 350 people in those eight events. I think that's about all I have. Do you have any questions?
Well, thank you. Obviously, a very active library that we have. We appreciate all the hard work. Any questions from the council?
I have a couple.
Sure.
You had mentioned, you're seeing an increase in the summer reading program.
Yes.
Any sense of why that's happened?
Um, I'm not sure, but our part-time person, Brenda, that we had this year, we couldn't have been able to do it without her. We had a 25% increase in the summer reading. I think part of it was the way that the whole rep program was run and advertised. A lot of people were doing that, and they saw a free reading program, so they just went ahead and signed up for it. Part of it was, we, this year, our sign up, you could do it online. You didn't have to walk into the library. We had about half of our signups were done online, so they just showed up to the program without us, because we were like, man, there's not very many pieces of paper here. But whenever we got all those computer ones, it, it brought us back up to where we were supposed to be. I, I think that just with the, the fall programs, the families that are in our area, with just more knowledge that we're out there and that, that we're doing things. We had grandparents, grandparents walk in and they said, hey, are you guys doing anything at the library? I got the grandkids here. And we're like, oh, yeah, here. And we just got them all signed up, and we had eight kids sign up for summer reading because they were staying with Grandma and Grandpa this summer. They were so excited to have something to do.
And my, my second question to you, it has to do with the game day. If I understood what you were telling us, that there's kids now starting to grab things that aren't computer games.
Exactly.
More traditional style of game.
Yep.
Do you see an increase in interest for kids?
We have.
Putting on electronics?
We have. The, the game day, that one game day I went in, there must, there must have been 12 or 15 kids in there, and they were all playing cards. We had decks of cards. They were playing Go Fish. They were playing War. They were playing, a couple of kids knew how to play Rummy, Gin Rummy. So they were playing Gin Rummy, and they had a couple other kids, they were teaching how to do it. So, yeah, the one day that, that it was cards out all on the table, they were just having a great time. I think that a lot of kids don't know how to play some of those games anymore. Cheats and Ladders, Candy Land. We've got, we've got about 70 some games at the library that you can check out. Exploding Kittens, Unicorns versus Zombies. Clue, I see. The Clue is Harry Potter Clue, and the Monopoly is Star Wars Monopoly. You should try those out. They're fun.
So as you're talking about teaching them the old traditional stuff, any plans on teaching them how to use a rotary phone?
I know. We should set one up and say, do you know how to call your mother? I've seen a YouTube video of some boys trying to figure out how to call. That was a fun thing.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Just one question.
Sure, Dave.
Do you take donations as far as games and stuff like that?
Absolutely.
Would you, would you have a list of stuff that you go through and gets used so much that you need to replace?
Um, right now, I need a rib for the Operation game. So do you have a replacement for that?
No, but how about, you know, say a whole game?
Yeah. No, um, it was just a couple weeks ago, somebody brought in one of those beautiful Scrabble games that's on a turntable. And we, instead of checking that one out, we have that set up by the fireplace. And I've seen two or three people, I don't know if they played a whole game or if they just messed around with it, but, yeah, I've seen people sitting there by the fireplace playing with the Scrabble game. So any games that you donate, we just ask that they be in decent condition. I mean, we'll reinforce the boxes and, and all that kind of stuff anyways. If we don't have a need for it, we might keep one for backup, because like, right now, we should have had a different Operation game so we could borrow a rib.
I do have an Operation game, and all the kids just kind of moved on from that as they've gotten older, so.
Yeah.
Whether or not it's perfect, I can bring it down to you.
Yeah, there's, I was surprised, some kids the other day, they were over in the corner laughing, and we were, they were situated behind a stack so that we couldn't quite tell what they were doing, and of course, librarians, you can't have children laughing. So we had to go inspect what they were doing. They had the Operation game over there on the floor. They were, they were sitting over there in the corner playing Operation in the middle of the afternoon, so. But, yeah, anything, any books, any donations that you give, the games, whatever, if we don't use them on our library, we take them over to the book barn, and the Friends do a very nice job of collecting funds and, and giving that back to us.
Great.
Very good. Thank you.
So if anybody's got a rib for the Operation game.
Thank you. Appreciate the report. Let's move along in our agenda. Are there any communications from the public? Hearing none.
I would like to say something, Mr. Mayor. There's been a vicious rumor around town that Ron Richards and I got in a big argument, and the mayor had to ask the chief of police to come talk to us. Nothing like that's ever happened. So whoever started the rumor, I wish they'd quit. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I just heard that from Ron, so.
I couldn't catch me if you don't complain.
Okay. Any other communications from the public? Hearing none. I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Make a motion that we go into executive session for South Dakota Qualified Law 1-25-21, Personnel.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we go into executive session for personnel. Misty, call the roll, please.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echathy.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll be going into executive session, and if you go down through the exit door down there, I think the other entrance into the room is blocked, so appreciate it. Okay. We'll call the meeting back to order. I'd like to move on in the agenda and take Personnel Action A by itself. I'd ask for a motion to approve Personnel Action A.
I'll make a motion to approve Personnel Action A.
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, we approve Personnel Action A. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. I would ask that Misty, you call the roll, please.
David Burris.
Yay.
Ray Echathy.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have City Administrator, John. I'd ask that you'd stand up and let yourself be recognized and welcome aboard to Hot Springs. And we do have a nine o'clock tour of the river with the Corps of Engineers, so. Welcome aboard. Next items on the agenda are the remainder of the Personnel Actions. We can take those together, B through F.
I make a motion to approve Personnel Actions B through F.
Been moved and seconded to approve Personnel Actions B through F. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. Misty, please call the roll.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echathy.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have those actions approved. Committee reports, Admin and Finance, Bob?
Well, I'm trying to answer this. The next Admin and Finance meeting will be September 2nd, 1:00 at City Hall, but I would like to take the opportunity to thank all of the council folks for our hard work on the budgets. We met for three nights, and we had different opinions on some things, but we made it through, and so I appreciate all of your support and help. Also want to thank all the city folks that helped with that, the city department heads, especially Misty. We also want to, how well she prepared she was, and all that she had to go through to make that possible for us. And then I'd like to thank Marilyn and Kim and Mayor Cotty for feeding us for three nights.
Yes.
I always appreciate it. And if you want to make the brownies a weekly thing, a bi-weekly council meeting, whatever, but I just want to thank everybody that was involved with the budget here, because I thought they went well. So thank you, folks.
Thanks, Bob. And Caitlin, did you have anything to add for the Administration of Finance?
Um, no. Are, are we meeting on the 2nd? Isn't that Labor Day?
Bob?
So that would be, that would be September 3rd. Will be the next.
That's September 3rd. Caitlin, very good pitch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Airport Advisory Committee, Bill. The next meeting will be Thursday, August 29th at 8:00 a.m. at the airport. Thank you. Custer Fall Management and Regional Waste Management District, Ron.
Next meeting will be, next meeting will be 12th September, 7:00 p.m. at the Mueller Service Center, 3:10.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Craig.
We met on August 7th, 5:00 at the library. Mr. Powers is there, Steve Weenya, Airline Schwarzenbach, Scott and myself. We talked about the Mark Walsh Oak Building. We asked Scott what the status is. It's been condemned with Kim gone. There was no new information needed to ask the attorney. Took a file and more, go forward with it. Burnout pizza, we talked about that. It's in the historic district, but they don't comply with regulations that others in the historic district has to, have to comply with. Looking for the city to come up with some sort of plan on regulations for the food trucks to comply with in the historic district. The place is not appropriate in the historic district as it sits and pulls out whenever they want to go other town. They don't pay property taxes, but economically good for sales tax. Talked about the Bronham Motel. Scott sent a letter to them, and had no reply yet on their sign. Blue Sea, Green Wolf, their sign is appropriate, no problem. Jumping disorderly, Scott called them, not complying or listening to Scott's help. Scott still, Scott will take pictures at the next meeting with the committee to vote on the sign. The bodega building, nothing is being done for the last six months. Committee in the city will draft a letter tomorrow. The red food truck in Centennial Park, not in the district, but now it is moved to the Lake Hills property, which is in the historical district. The terms, Powers and Hagan expired in 2018. Were they reappointed by council? Powers was asking, he never heard. Next meeting is September 4th, 5:00 at the library.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. I guess I'm a little surprised that downtown businesses are against the food trucks that get people to stop.
I just report what they thought.
No, I'm just, I'm just a little bit surprised with that, but interesting.
Craig, does Scott attend those meetings?
Yes.
Okay. So he's there. Okay.
I said, Scott.
Okay. Misty, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison.
Evans Plunge Advisory will meet September 12th, 12:00 Evans Plunge.
Okay. Parks, Recreation, Beautification and Cultural Development, Dave.
We will be meeting September the 4th at 3:00 p.m. here at the Mueller, and that is a Wednesday, not a Tuesday.
Good. Thank you.
What time is that, Dave?
Planning and Zoning Commission, Allison.
Planning and zoning meeting this Wednesday, 7:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Public Safety, Bill.
Public Safety will meet this Wednesday, the 21st, at the library. The normal meeting that's open to the public for issues and our normal discussion will begin at 2:00 p.m. However, we'll have a special session that will begin at 1:00 p.m. that the council, the full council's invited to, that will be reviewing the resource management tool for Emergency Coordination Center. So again, that'll be at 1:00 p.m. at the large conference room at the library. And then at 2:00 p.m., we will start normal business for public safety.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Southern Hills Economic Development, Caitlin, do you have anything to report?
Um, our meeting on the 16th was canceled. Our next meeting is scheduled for September 27th at the Edmont Senior Center at 6:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, the only thing I have to report is the members did take a donation, and the cart path along the 16 tee box is, has been poured. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron.
Next meeting is 10th of September, 7:00 p.m. at the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on our agenda.
Mayor Cotty?
Yes.
Did you want to report for Public Works? I'm fine if you don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not, that was not intentional, Bob. Public Works, please.
Public Works met on August 13th at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Ray, Craig, Tracy, Scott, Billy Morrow, Keith Nagabauer, the Fall River Water Users, and myself were present. Quite a list of old business items here. Catholican Avenue, we're, we're close to having that taken care of. The Hot Springs Club is permanently removed, one of the wooden poles that would have limited access to several private properties along Catholican Avenue. With that pole being removed, the city will be able to begin work on a new access route into those properties on Bottom One. Billy's got a number of things that his folks are taking care of, but he expects within Bottom One, they're going to be able to get that taken care of. Three bids were received to raise the electric service line and radio club. A low bid from Schumann Electric for $663 was accepted. Billy will contact them to begin work. So the, the report is correct at the time it was made up, but that pole has in fact, the service line has been in fact raised, so that's taken care of. And the city attorney needs to prepare a temporary easement for the remaining metal antenna tower and wooden pole. Tracy prepared some information, forwarded that on to Garland, and Garland has sent back the easements and what's necessary to get in front of you folks. And Misty had asked if it was appropriate to have that. And Misty had asked if it was appropriate to have that in front of you folks for the next council meeting, and I responded, yes, please have that available for you to take over again. So, I think that's that issue that started probably mid-April. We'll be behind this, we'll be met next month or so. We met with Fall River Water Users, spoke with Keith about renewing the current Fall River Water Users contract. That expires on August 1st, 2022. The cost of water per thousand gallons and the length of the contract still need to be agreed to. We also talked about the possibility of jointly adding an additional water holding tank to benefit both Fall River Water Users and the city. The 26th Street Water Project still needs a little more refinement. Now, it looks like there's going to be two additional state properties that are probably going to be added to that. So, an amendment to the Assessment District for Council Approval will identify the final cost increase for each property. Cardinal driveway of the golf course after one of the last heavy rains had some flooding that was going on. So, the city crews were out there. They added some additional brick wrap, allowing a number of golf course roads to contain and redirect water runoff. That had washed away some gravel along those roads, and more work may be necessary on other areas as they're identified. The handicap loading and unloading zone right there on North River Street, adjacent to the vault, jumped in disorderly. That was changed from a loading zone to a handicap parking spot. These were conversations that had the business owners and Bill and I, we met with them. Additional blue lines were painted at each end of the parking spot to provide better visual markings. These new markings will be tried through September to decide if this handicap parking spot is working. The improvements of the wastewater treatment plant, the city's been approved to declare the necessary repairs to the wet well of the water treatment plant as an emergency. This will speed up the repair process with the estimated cost to be around $143,000. The cost of the repair will come out of the wastewater fund. The repairs will not only replace the wet well walls that are failing, but include a new wet well cover installed by city employees to include an exhaust venting system to remove gases from that employee workspace. If anybody has been down at the sewer plant in the last three years, you know you're walking into that sewer plant as soon as you get inside the door, and that shouldn't be happening. It should be just like walking into your library, but we need to get that vent taken care of also, and that's part of the project. If you remember a number of meetings ago, we had a resident that talked to us about their property up on 25th Street, that during the 26th Street Water Assessment Project, they lost some of the gravel to their, to their house, and they were also concerned about a mud hole that was on the door and happening. The city will replace the gravel access to that property along 25th Street. Again, that's on the city's work schedule to get that taken care of. The pot hole was taken a look at and didn't require a further repair. The asphalt repairs that have been approved for 2019, the street department is currently working on a section of River Street between University and Jennings Avenues. They're using a new asphalt zipper and they love it. If anybody's watched it in action, thank you for referring to this. It's a great piece of equipment. So, they're using that asphalt zipper to gradually remove the existing asphalt mat in preparation for a new mat. And work will begin on River Street between University and Albany Avenues this week. The city crews should be working on that. Code enforcement, the committee asked Scott to schedule more hours in his work week to address code enforcement issues. Committee would like to see more non-compliant code issues addressed by increasing specific dollars to code enforcement. We have one new business item. Alder Monromy addressed a burned-down trailer located by the sewer plant that has been there for some time. And we'll continue discussions on that until we get the issue resolved. Ray, Craig, you have anything else?
No, I don't.
I got, I should have asked this during Public Works. The gravel that's going in that guy's driveway that got washed out. This happens more often, are we going to keep putting gravel in this driveway?
It's not a washout. It was as a result of the water line going in, and so it'll be replaced.
Okay.
And it's fillings or tailings that they're going to replace it with. Okay, the next Public Works meeting will be August 27th, 3:00 p.m. at City Hall. Public's willing?
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is, are the ordinance, is, under ordinances, item A, the first reading of ordinance 1201. And this is to add a section establishing a defining new airport zone AZ. Now that the city owns that airport, we want to establish a zoning ordinance. So, I'd ask for a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1201.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1201, amending Chapter 27-A zoning to a section establishing and defining a new airport zone AZ.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we add that, or that we approve this ordinance. Just a couple of things, we've looked at this through planning and zoning, and the Airport Advisory Board has looked at it. It has been sent, a copy has been sent to our airport consulting engineer, KLJ, KLZ. Bill, I don't know if you've heard back, but Scott did get a call from them today. They said that looked at it and complies with all the FAA requirements, so that was something. So, I would ask, planning and zoning, is there a recommendation from that committee as far as this is out of ordinance?
Yeah, it was approved to come to council through planning and zoning.
Okay, and Bill, Airport.
Airport Advisory had reviewed an earlier version. They had a couple of questions. We've addressed those questions. It mainly had to do with the duties of the airport manager and the appeals process, and those are all addressed in the chapter. And if I could just add that Allison and Scott and I spent an afternoon going through this line by line, and we simplified it a lot. And that's what KLJ took a look at, and we, we actually borrowed this from another community, and we spent the time to make sure we got rid of the things that we didn't need. The community that we borrowed it from actually had an airport inside their community as opposed to our airport, which is outside the community. So, they were really worried about trees and mentioned trees a lot. I don't think the Forest Service mentioned trees as much as they did. So, we went through and instead of just blindly saying, oh, boy, this looks good, yeah, it's fine, we went through and really culled it out. Because anything we put into an ordinance, if we have to turn around once we all say yea, we have to then enforce it. So, we made sure that what's in there is appropriate for us, and, and we made sure that those things in there. So, things like noise, well, we don't have a community around there, so noise really isn't an issue. But the really important things are the height restrictions of anything we might build. Well, those are in there, and they're tied to our airport master plan and our airport zoning plan, and it's tied to the drawings that are in that existing plan. And it's, the types of things you can build there must be per what goes on at an airport, and things that you can't have out there. And so, the common sense things that we can allow out there are there. The common sense things that shouldn't be out there are mentioned. And if you do build something, it's got to go through the permit process. So, we've gone from a, about a 28-page document down to what you see here, and we think we've got a real common sense, workable document. So, a very long answer to say we recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Appreciate the background. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Misty, I'd ask you to call the roll, please.
I want to make one change to that first reading that we noted in Section 27A dot zero four dot 14 dot 04, adoption of airport zones, zoning map. Item two, it's on the second page. It has the boundaries of these zones and areas established as shown on the airport zoning map dated 7/31/19, but the map is dated 7/30/19. It's not a substantial change. We'll just update that date before the next meeting.
Thank you.
And then I'll call the roll. David Burris.
Yea.
Ray Echathy.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that first reading is approved. We move on to Resolution 2019-17, and we have in your packages a list of surplus property. I'd like to ask one correction to that, that we removed the two rolling line chalk markers. Our summer rec program can find a use for those, and Kathy had asked that those be removed. So, I approve, ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-17 with the rolling line chalkers removed.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-17, a resolution to surplus city property with the removal of the rolling line chalk rollers. Sound good?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve that resolution. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. I'd ask Misty if you'd call the roll, please.
Dave Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echathy.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
That resolution is approved. New business, we have a possible motion in discussion to authorize me as mayor to sign the Hot Springs Municipal Paving Maintenance Financial Assistance Agreement. As you know, on those, the FAA will pay 80%, or 90% of the costs. South Dakota Aeronautics Commission, 5%. And we're left with the expense of 5% or $3,568.59. That's necessary to keep our airport runway, seal the cracks on the runway, to keep the pavement from deteriorating, and obviously, it's a good deal for the city. So, I'd ask for a motion to authorize us to sign that agreement.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Hot Springs Municipal Airport 2019 Pavement Maintenance State Financial Assistance Agreement with the South Dakota Aeronautics Commission, project number 3-46-4600-25-2019. Total estimated project cost of $71,371.78. City share of expenses, 5% or $3,568.59.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve signing this agreement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Call the roll.
I'm sorry, call the roll.
That's all right.
Reverting back to old habits.
David Burris.
You're good.
Yes.
Ray Echathy.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I assume the Airport Advisory Board would recommend approval on that.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Sorry I didn't ask. We've got a possible motion to approve the incentive for Evans Plunge lifeguards that have worked over 300 hours on a 10-week consecutive period during our peak summertime to receive a $200 bonus. I would ask for a motion to approve that incentive.
I'll make a motion to approve an incentive for Evans Plunge lifeguards, work 300 hours over a 10-week consecutive period between May 1 and August 31, and receive a $200 bonus.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that incentive. Are there any discussion? Bob, I know this has been discussed in Admin Finance. Can you give us some background?
Yes, the idea behind it is that it's, in the past, it's been difficult for the Evans Plunge to keep lifeguards throughout the summer. They have to be trained and certified before they are able to assume their duties, which makes it difficult for them to stay fully staffed. So, this was one suggestion that was brought to Admin Finance, as opposed to we can keep our lifeguards from the beginning of the season through the end of the season. And it's recommended through Admin Finance to give it a shot, see if it works, see if it's a solution for us. If it's not, we go back to dealing with lifeguards as they come and they'll be getting them certified, having enough staff to make sure that the folks who are in are safe.
And it has been asked, this is just for this year, from May 1 to August 31 of this year, that we're looking at. If there was to be that bonus given in the future, would have to come before the council again. If it proves successful and is desired by the Plunge staff. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question for Misty. Do you have an idea of the maximum dollar amount that this makes across the city?
I believe Chris said she either had five, four or five lifeguards for this year who would qualify for this incentive. So, $200 apiece. We talked about $1,000.
Thank you.
Good.
And to be clear, the motion was just for one year? Just for 2019, it's being approved this night?
Yes.
Who's making the motion and seconding the motion? Do we need to agree, but just 2019, or? Yeah, just want to make sure you both agree with that.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and that's what was discussed in Evans Plunge as well, that this would be attempted to see if it works and then evaluated again next year to see if that actually did what we wanted it to do. So, it was meant for this year specifically.
Any other, any other discussion? Hearing none. Misty, please call the roll.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echathy.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
No.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion does carry. We do have also a possible motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $17,500. And this would be to the Solid Waste Fund for the green waste pile processing. We did get a grant award from the state of South Dakota. I'd ask for that motion to be made at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $17,500 to the Solid Waste Fund, 612-43230-42200, for the green waste pile processing. Revenue received from the state of South Dakota Solid Waste Managed Program, Grant Award, number 2019G-SW-400.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this budget supplement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. Misty, would you please call the roll?
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echathy.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Allison Ritter Bush. Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we also have in your packages a proposal from Kate Thorstensen to complete our audit services from 2019 to 2021. Those costs are listed in that, in that package and also in that, the motion that's before you on the agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve that three-year fee schedule.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve a proposed three-year fee schedule with Kettle Thorstensen, LLP, to complete 2019 through 2021 audit services at the following cost per year. 2019, $20,750 plus $3,500 for the first compliance audit under Uniform Guidance, and $2,500 for each additional major federal program if needed, plus actual travel costs. 2020, $22,000. five hundred for the first compliance audit under uniform guidance, and two thousand five hundred dollars for each additional major federal program, if needed, plus actual travel costs. Two thousand twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars plus three thousand five hundred for the first compliance audit, and two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars each additional plus actual travel costs.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve those and schedule those audits with Kaitlyn Thorstensen. Misty, would you give us an update on the service that you feel that Kaitlyn Thorstensen has provided us in the past?
I strongly recommend their firm and consistency with our audit services. I appreciate it.
Okay. There any other comments, questions, or discussion?
Just curious, Misty, is, I see there was a two hundred and fifty dollar difference and then a thousand dollar jump through the year. Is there, was there more to it that they thought, or just that's the increase of their fee?
It's one thousand two hundred and fifty increase over nineteen and twenty, and it's a three percent increase each year.
Okay, so that's how they're, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
For Oliverman Romi. Typically, Oliverman powers read the lengthy work of the agenda items, so taking his place and that to your ward, I think it should be incumbent upon you to go ahead and pick up those duties and these longer days, read those.
Second.
We will give an additional five thousand or five dollars for each motion, and two fifty for the second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Misty, will you please call the roll?
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echope.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We also have in your packages a temporary alcoholic beverage license application for the vault to be used at Centennial Park for a community potluck on the thirty-first of August. I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from G Two Lawn Care DBA, the vault to be used at Centennial Park for the community potluck event to be held on August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this alcoholic beverage license. There any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. Misty, please call the roll.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echope.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion is approved. Item F is a travel request from Chris Hansen and Joshua Johnson, Aquatics Director at Evans Plunge, to attend a youth mental first aid training that'll be offered here in Hot Springs. This is, I think, a very, very important training, and I really appreciate Chris for lining this up. It's a opportunity to identify mental health problems and perhaps substance abuse problems in our youth and to recognize those. And I just wanted to mention that that will be happening here in Hot Springs. So I would ask for a motion to approve that travel request for training for Chris and Joshua.
I make a motion to approve travel request from Chris Hansen, Facility Director, and Joshua Johnson, Aquatics Director at Evans Plunge Mineral Spring, to attend the youth mental health first aid training offered in Hot Springs on eight, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to offer this, or to approve this travel request. There any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. Misty, please call the roll.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echope.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
Yes.
Caitlin Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, in our Agenda Finance Officer report, Misty?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so excited to welcome our new city administrator. I'd like to reiterate, it's a very valuable position within our city. You almost have to be Superman, so welcome aboard Superman. I definitely felt the absence of that position. Most recently, besides being down the city administrator, we're also missing another valuable team member, our Assistant Finance Officer, but she is on a wonderful vacation to Europe for her daughter's wedding, so she will be back. But it has been interesting with my own personal issues. My daughter had a knee surgery and down the valuable city administrator position, and my very valuable assistant. It's been a challenging couple weeks, so I appreciate all of you who've given me some time and understood that it takes me a little bit longer to get back to you on things, and I apologize that I wasn't able to be in the interviews for the city administrator, but am very confident in the decision that was made by the hiring committee after reviewing all the applications. Just trying to keep up. We are thankful for our front desk staff. Those two ladies up front have stepped in and stepped up and are definitely the face of our city. You wouldn't believe the questions they answer every day, the direction that they give and the service they provide to our community, our employees, and our council. So I wanted to thank them for stepping up and helping out so much and always doing such a great job and being so consistent with that. Like Bob, I'd also like to thank the council members for the time we took during the budget meetings and the cotties for feeding us. We appreciate it, kept everybody in a better mood later into the evenings. I am working on preparing the two thousand twenty appropriation ordinance, budget appropriation ordinance, and I will share the notable budget items at the next meeting with the first reading of the ordinance. We are working on our work comp renewal worksheet, so good thing we got our budget done, because a lot of it has to do with salaries and wages projected for next year. I did receive the packet for the two thousand twenty United Way campaign. The city of Hot Springs currently donates, employees of the city of Hot Springs currently donate over eight hundred dollars to United Way. They're celebrating seventy-five years of serving Black Hills communities, and we hope to increase that amount to maybe a thousand for our two thousand twenty, so I'm going to put the challenge out there to our employees to bump up our donations just a little bit to that very valuable, very valuable organization that helps our communities. That money stays in our town and directly contributes and benefits this community. I've been collecting the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty propane pre-buy quotes. I've reached out to CBH Cooperative, McGas, Nelson's Oil and Gas, Amerigas, Hideaway Oil, and Stern Oil. I should have those amounts for you. My hope is to have, I have three responses so far, to have that summarized for you and that action on the next council agenda, so we can enter into a contract for our propane pre-buy for the two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty season. I'd like to provide an update on the airport fueling system. We, I received notice today that our merchant account has been established, and we are now working with the software company to get the deposits going into the city's account. And once that is complete, we've purchased the vehicle, we've got all the licensing we need, we've had the pumps inspected, and we are now the proud sole owners of the fueling system at our airport and are beginning to operate in a, in a, in a positive accounting fashion, having all the funds coming down to the city. So excited to get that done. All the computer glitches, I think, have been worked out at the airport, and accessing the reports for the sales, and as soon as we can start getting that money consistently coming to the city, we, we are on track. I did reach out to the auctioneer for a bidding auction regarding the city's surplus combined auction. We are looking to combine with the school and the county, and he confirmed today that both of them are on board, and he'll be preparing contracts to present. And we have postponed the date from the beginning of September till the end of September, beginning of October, to give enough time to get all the information gathered and advertised for the auction. So you may see another resolution or two as I continue to push our departments to find things that are no longer useful to our city, to unburden ourselves from those things and maybe make a little bit of money at our auction. That's all I have for my update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Misty. Lot going on. Just a couple of important things that I just wanted to share with the council and the public. We did have a Transportation Alternative Program grant application that we submitted. We did garner a site visit from South Dakota DOT that would have garnered five, four hundred thousand dollar support for our suspended sidewalk program. We had an opportunity to present the concerns, our safety concerns, in detail, and we were told that we do not qualify for the grant because there are other communities that maybe don't have sidewalks or have greater needs than we do. One thing, it probably was beneficial, at least this year, because we would have had to commit to funding the remainder of that project in-house. But the thing that bothered me, and I was very, quite frustrated with, was the comment by the project engineer that said, "Well, you know, you really don't need sidewalks. We've already provided you two sidewalks with the design." It was very interesting. Almost on cue, we, we almost witnessed realization of the safety concerns that we have. A young bike rider was coming across the bridge by City Hall. We were all standing there discussing those safety issues, and he went lickety-split through the crowd and came within an inch of getting hit by a vehicle. The vehicle was fortunately, during the speed limit, was able to stop. Bike rider was able to avoid the collision. But all of us collectively took a breath and said, "Oh, my goodness, what we just witnessed." If those lingwits would have been what South Dakota DOT designed them to be, that young bike rider would have certainly hit the car, probably flipped over the car at the speed that he was going, no helmet, and it would have been a tragic situation. It bothered me. It bothered everyone that witnessed that, and I, it bothered me so much that I did write a letter to our regional office or an email to our regional office, and I want to read that to you tonight. I said, "Thank you for coming down yesterday. I'm obviously disappointed not so much in not getting consideration for the grant. More so, I was concerned by the attitude conveyed by the statement by the project engineer. Well, we're giving you two sidewalks. I believe the near miss that we witnessed was a confirmation of the safety concerns we have in our unique situation down on River Street. The question that haunted me after the accident, what if that traffic lane had been a foot narrower, as called for in the new highway design, with that young man riding the bike be lain in a hostile bay or even worse? He had no helmet. Or what about the guilt heaped on the driver who was in compliance with traffic laws, knowing that he had injured or worse, knocked out a young life? As a trained and certified experienced U.S. aircraft accident investigator, I have been trained to dig and find the root causes of an accident in order to prevent future accidents. The failed engine that led to the crash of the X sixteen aircraft accident that I investigated in New Mexico led back to an inexperienced engine mechanic that installed the ninth-stage turbine assembly improperly, and that inexperienced supervisor who missed recognizing that misinstallation during a required inspection. But the root went even deeper, all the way back to a major command's personnel assignment unit, who had ignored the base's cry for more experienced maintenance personnel. More experienced personnel would likely have caught that young mechanic's air and saved a multimillion-dollar Air Force asset. The pilot thankfully ejected safely. I use this example as an illustration. We who are at the root of designing roadways have the opportunity to provide that extra margin of safety. Now, and I maintain, we must make every effort to do so. Heaven forbid that we have an accident that causes a major injury or even a fatality. I do not want the investigation to trace its root cause to a complacent city leadership that did nothing to correct the documented safety concern." And by the way, I attach that documented safety concern that Bill Lukens brought and contributed to that investigation. Certainly, we cannot fix humanity. There will always be young bike riders tempting fate by approaching a crosswalk at great big speed, but we can design safer environments that may save them from their falling, rather than just saying, "You're good because you got two sidewalks." Again, I bring these concerns from two individuals who are not just trying to get a unique suspended sidewalk for downtown Hot Springs. Yes, the design is unique, and it will be used to draw people, but at the root, at least two individuals, one a certified safety professional with a major oil company and another with a trained and experienced aircraft accident investigator, we documented our safety concerns in writing. I believe our testimony would be considered viable in any court of law. Having witnessed now two near misses on River Street within the past month, I'm even more determined to fight for a safer design option for our River Street reconstruction project. I thank you for letting me vent and express my concerns, because they go far deeper than just tapping two sidewalks. I did send that to our regional DOT office, and he is taking that to peer. Also sent a copy to our contact in the governor's office in our shiving, and did get a reply from him of our concern about the dismissive attitude the project engineers seem to have concerning our safety concerns. It was an eye-opening experience, and I just wanted you as a council to understand the seriousness that we're trying to take with this and make sure we get that added thirteen percent somehow add to our highway reconstruction project so that we can have a safer, more compliant environment in our downtown. Couple of other updates. I did also present our design in detail to the regional congressional offices, and for two purposes. They have access to perhaps grants that we may not know about for funding that design, and I wanted them to be aware of what we're trying to do, so there could be a match if possible. And secondly, if we do have any kind of concerns with coordinating with the Corps of Engineers with anything that is done concerning the sidewalk or the road construction, that they're aware of what, they're aware of our design and what those concerns might be. Couple of other things. We would anxiously waiting the Fall River Hot Air Balloon Festival. It's a great job to bring people here to Hot Springs. I want to thank the Chamber for all the work they've done, and it's also a great opportunity to showcase our airport, so we're thankful to have that balloon festival and hope it brings a lot of people to town. And one final good news note, I hadn't checked earlier, but our residential and commercial building permit have actually been up in two thousand nineteen, at this time compared with last year's. We've had over two point seven million dollars worth of construction, and that's up sixty-one thousand dollars over two thousand eighteen. And if you remember, two thousand eighteen was double of that, which is in two thousand seventeen. So the fact that this and previous councils have supported, for example, the paving of Boulder Falls and some of the other projects that we've approved have made a difference, and we hope that that number continues to keep climbing and Hot Springs continues to keep growing. We are open for business. With that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The, 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 we have that we said travel request with the Evans Plunge personnel?
Yes.
Well, people watch this on TV and stuff, it's actually for certification, because they wonder, oh, they're spending ninety-eight dollars on a travel to Hot Springs.